Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's Kailhoga County Planning Commission meeting for June 12, 2025. At this time of night, can we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Burke. Laura Black.
Here.
Mayor Daley Jones.
Here.
Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Fields.
Here.
Mayor Kurtz.
Here.
Mayor Orkut.
Here.
Councilperson Simon. Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Mayor Wheelo.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to today's meeting. First off, do we have any comments from the public? No comments from the public. I'd like to note that Mayor Burke is in attendance also. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 10, 2025, meeting.
So who?
Motion by Mayor Wheelo.
Second.
Second by Mayor Jones. Any comments? Or the motion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, well, we'll roll right into the resolutions. Mary?
Thank you very much. The first item, meeting board, attention, is Resolution Number 250612-A, Sanctuary and Preserve, and I will turn it over to Megan Chaney.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, so I'll be covering the Phase 2A Final Plat for the Sanctuary Preserve. Sorry. So this is an application submitted by Valori Builders, requesting approval of the Final Plat for Phase 2A of the Sanctuary Preserve, PRD, that's Planned Residential Development Subdivision, in Olmsted Township. You can see, it's just south of John Road. And you can see, this has been an ongoing development that I know many of you are familiar with. You can see, the western portion of it is already well under construction. This project began in 2020 when Valori Builders submitted a master, an overall master subdivision plan for the Sanctuary Preserve. It proposed the creation of 136 sublots for single-family residential detached homes to be built in five phases. And this particular subdivision included two different developers. Phases 1, 3, and 4 were built by Polte, who finished their last phase, Phase 4, last year, and Phases 2 and 5 being built by Valori Builders. Valori Builders submitted a modified preliminary plan for Phase 2 and a modified overall plan for the entire subdivision in 2023, which was approved by the Planning Commission via Resolution 230209A. There's just a simplified map that shows the different phases. You see Phase 2A as they're highlighted in blue. There's a detailed map just showing it's a relatively small portion of the overall subdivision. Valori Builders submitted the application on May 15 of this year. Phase 2A encompasses roughly five acres of land. It includes 0.76 acres of open space and 0.67 acres of stormwater management features, roughly 1,200 lineal feet of pavement and 2,000 lineal feet of sidewalk, and just over 1,000 feet of sanitary and storm sewers. Phase 2A will create nine residential sublots. So County Planning found that all requisite information was submitted as part of the application for Final Plat approval, and that the Final Plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plan and overall master plan of the subdivision. The conditions have been met that were involved in the approval of the preliminary plan, and that we, and we also found that the infrastructure was built according to the approved improvement plans, and that they have been built according to the specifications of both Public Works and the township. The recommendation from County Planning is to approve the Final Plat with the following conditions: that the Final Plat be updated to include some minor modifications noted by Public Works, and I believe those have all been made. Those were submitted this morning. The finalized soil erosion and sediment control guarantee needs to be submitted, as well as finalized sidewalk and street tree performance guarantees. Those were submitted. We had some minor adjustments that the developer is working with the title agency to get those finalized forms to us. Those should be arriving shortly. And lastly, he submitted a favorable test results from a deflection test that had to be retested. That was actually retested yesterday, and that passed inspection from Public Works. So once those two remaining items have been submitted to County Planning, Director Servie will sign the Final Plat, and that'll be forwarded to County Council for the acceptance of dedication of lands.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Any comments, questions from board members?
Do have some of the developer's team here. Yeah, I'm sorry. Tony Valori is the developer of Valori Homes is here. Do you have any questions?
No, not really. The delay might seem like it was intentional, but it wasn't. We have 80-foot lots and Polte home does 60, so we had two different planned communities. So we were just going at our pace. We're a little bit different than the national builder.
Thanks, Mr. Valori. Anything else? I'll make a motion to, sorry, let me get this right. Conditional approval, right? Motion for conditional approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Burke. Any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, comments or queries?
Thank you. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item that needs board action is Resolution Number 250612-B. This is regarding Belmont Place, and I will turn it over to Eric Engel, who's one of our principal planners.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, yeah, so this is a request, the applicant is requesting approval of the overall master plan based on 1 and 2 of the preliminary plan for what they're calling Belmont Place. It is a planned residential subdivision of single-family detached homes. The location of this property is located on the southwest corner of Sharp Road, which is a township road, and Shady Road, which is a county road. Looking at around, just under 30 acres, 29.85 acres. And as I mentioned, zoning there is PRD, so planned residential. Orient everyone here. So just to orient everyone, it is a vacant parcel previously used as, I believe it was leased out of this farmland. Land used to surrounding the site, so just to the north, you have multifamily apartments, so the Evergreen Farms apartment complex there. And then right adjacent to that is the newly constructed dog park, right underneath some of the utility lines. To the south is single-family residential homes. To the east is more farmland, as well as single-family residential. And then to the west is single-family residential. So just some history here. As I mentioned, it was previously farmland. You'll notice that on the site as well, it does feature an irrigation ditch to the south of the parcel, otherwise known as Busby Ditch. The initial application for this was submitted on September 12, 2024. The applicant did withdraw due to concerns and questions from all the interim departments, specifically about the usable space and the overall design of the proposed regional, whether we're calling it regional detention pond in the proposal. So since then, Paul Mary has worked with us to modify some of the lots, as well as incorporate some native plantings and really kind of activate some of the stormwater space that normally wouldn't be included in open space calculation. Really working with us to activate some of that with multi-use path. And so with that, it's a little bit more aligned with our subdivision regulations, as well as other applicable engineering standards. So ultimately, they resubmitted this past month, May 14, 2025. So again, just some details of that request. So we're looking at just under 30 acres of land here, 29.85 acres. Proposed 64 sublots, which will be single-family residential units. 5.98 acres of this will be dedicated to open space. Again, that is including the stormwater detention pond to the south, regional pond, and have approximately 2,770 lineal feet of roadway. I will say, because the subdivision regulations technically do not allow for the regional detention pond to be included in that calculation, they have formally submitted a modification letter to you all, which was included in your packet. And so we're looking at approximately 3.42 acres of that land, of that 5.98 being dedicated to the regional stormwater there. And so obviously, with passive recreation, none of these native plantings included. So just to mention also, the development is planned to be constructed in two phases, with all infrastructure and utilities being completed in Phase 1. All site prep work of the first 29 sublots for Phase 1 will be done, and then 35 of those sublots will be completed in Phase 2. So we'll go through some of the proposed drawings here. So this is as existing here. It's kind of oriented oddly, so looking to the north, it's really kind of looking west, I should say. So this indicating two kind of wetland areas there in the hatched. One of those will be mitigated and filled through a central pond, and that's kind of the more centrally located one. The one on the right is, it will remain. Then you notice that the line, there's an easement on the south end there, to the right, that indicates the Busby Ditch. So then with the overall site plan layout here, again, the dashed showcasing the two phases, so really kind of the part on the upper end there in this image will be included in that first phase, as well as any of the open space to the south, to the right here, will be included in that first phase.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. Yes.
So this mitigation of the wetland, are they going to buy land someplace else? What's the mitigation? They're just gonna?
Basically.
Order on a wetland, or what's?
Basically, yes. Kind of more or less the centralized pond here, as well as they've included open space on the outer part as well. So the perimeter kind of features all of that, which is included in those calculations.
Isn't any of this wetland protected?
It is. They did. I believe they had received variances from the township.
The township?
Yes. So, which ultimately were approved. So, and I don't think, and that was regarding the stormwater feature in the south. And the township actually, and there's a discrepancy with our regulations as well as the township, they're, they do allow for wetlands, I believe, to count as open space also. But again, that's kind of.
Ours do not.
Correct. Yeah, so, yeah, so when it comes to mitigating that, yeah, ultimately, there is a riparian buffer that would be needed, but they had, they did receive a variance for that. Developer is here, he can speak more to that process if need be. So yeah, so this is ultimately the grading and stormwater plan. Featured, the green kind of perimeter there featured. Showcase there is, is just to delineate more or less the native plantings. Basically manufactured wetlands to the south there, again, to help mitigate. All right. And then, yeah, so the overall landscaping plan does meet all the requirements set in the regulations. So we, the staff, did not have any issue with that. I will note that the Conservation District was pleased that they are moving forward with some sort of native planting scheme for that, for that detention pond, as a way to educate folks in immediate vicinity there. So with that, there's two approvals, really. So staff's recommending approval of the modification as we feel that it meets the criteria outlined in our land regulations. We do not find that the proposed modification is detrimental to the public interests, nor does it impair desirable development in the neighborhood and community. And the intent of the 2020 subdivision regulations is met in activating that open green space and providing passive recreation connectivity around the stormwater basin. Other reasons, again, outlined in their letter include support from the township. So again, that variance that they received to allow for the stormwater to be included in those calculations, those open space calculations, and them exceeding the overall minimum required open space, which is 4.97. So what they have proposed here with the storm basin, if it's, if the actual basin's included in that, is 5.98. So with that, staff is recommending approval with conditions. I'm not going to list out all of them. There are quite a few. A lot will be addressed in the next phase here, the improvement plans, the middle phase. But we are recommending approval of the preliminary plan for Belmont Place with those conditions set. I'll entertain any other questions if you guys have them at this time.
I'm confused by the Planning Commission's requirements and the town's recommendation. What I'm hearing is contrary to what we would otherwise be doing with our planning. You know, what's the point of Planning Commission having the jurisdiction over this township if it's not being respected or followed?
Can I speak to it?
I mean, I can.
Yeah, I'm happy to join you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, I mean, we're, so a part of me coming on board is really kind of look into the subdivision regulations and really kind of meeting the same requirements that the township does. And so we're really trying to work with them to align those requirements.
I'm sorry, that's not answering the question, because now they're not aligned. And I guess it's a legal question. For me, I'm not comfortable with eradicating wetlands and, you know, doing something someplace. It's, this is a difficult place in the township that I think we've run rampant with development. I've been asking for a long time to have some kind of green space plan to overlay this, protect the resources there, and I don't really see that happening. So maybe it's more a legal question. I understand your response is you want to try to align, but it's, what plan is actually going to take precedent?
Yeah, and I know, just to speak to that too, we've had many conversations with the township about the order of in which things are happening.
Yeah.
Because what's happening is they're getting approval at the local level.
Right.
With variances that sometimes do go indirect. They contradict the subdivision regulations, which we're uphold, we need to uphold. And so I think part of this conversations is trying to have that conversation early, because again, if developers, and I know you've got the whole team here, you're getting approval at the local level. We, the County Planning Commission always seems like the bad guy, because we're saying no, because they're going against these regulations. So it's part of this legal issue of we are, and we are required to uphold the subdivision regulations, which are under review and are being revised to really be more specific and more clear. But it's not uncommon to have these wetlands filled for some of these projects, not just in the township, unless they're under a nationwide permit and they're a specific type of wetland. The other thing that we're working with the township is we did not award them one of the planning grants this year, because they wanted to do a master plan, and we felt it was more important to help them with a land use plan to plan what gets developed going forward. Interested in doing that, which I hope this all aligns that we need to meet the subdivision regulations, not contradict. They're not currently.
So why is this in front of us?
Sure, sure. Sorry.
I mean, isn't it part of the process that we can ask, they can ask for variances? Perhaps some flexibility, and that you're on board to try and mold this all together and make it work?
Yeah, so it really kind of puts us in a difficult position when the township is in charge of their own zoning, kind of like Mary was saying, right? So because they've received variances for this, I mean, it is, it is, we're trying to like work with them and kind of mold this to what we want to see that is better aligned with our regulations. And we do, there is a modification process in there in our current existing regulations. It's not a formal variance process, like you would think like with a BCA or anything like that. So, and I, and I do think that's part of the reason why it's not like that in this case. Because we, I mean, as part of, as part of our role, we do really try to like work with the town. The township's all on board with this, right? So they've gone through all of their regulatory approvals. And so again, we're just trying to work with folks based on that. And we're in the process, we're recognizing where certain conflicts are taking place and need to change. So that's definitely on our radar.
We have some flexibility, or are you saying, here's the code, you gotta follow it, that's it?
Yeah, I mean, subdivision regulations are what has to hold. Those don't have, but what I, it's not a variance with the subdivision regulations, but if in your packet, and there's about two and a half pages of conditions, so this is only preliminary. And we are trying to do more of those conversations and review plans with the developers and the township in advance, so that now we're at preliminary, and here are these, I don't know, it goes up from A to?
Yeah, it's extensive.
Eight, it's high, and so before we get to the improvement plans, all of these conditions have to be met before we get to the next step. So I think there's still time to have these conversations, and we can definitely get a better answer. But I do know there's another development that's coming up that's got more filling of wetlands, and it's happened before. It's just they're only protected if they have a certain category.
Well, we can protect to some extent.
Right.
And we can, and I guess if I can, it's like, what's the point of us being here? If the township is just doing what the township wants to do with granting variances conflicting with us, you know, I question our role, you know, I really do, and let, maybe the township needs to be. Oh, there's something other than the township, so they can control their destiny. But right now, we are the jurisdictional entity that should be doing this, so it's a conflict.
I have the impression that you worked with them to create some flexibility. Because if there's no flexibility, what are we doing?
Except, well, we shouldn't be here then. If they're doing what they want.
I think that's why we're here.
I don't know why we're here. If they're doing their own thing.
I'm here to, if there's, if there's variances or some type of modifications, then that's, you're putting them together to see what makes it good for the township, but also under the umbrella of the county. Not just a carte blanche, yes or no.
Right. I think to the point, Mayor Kurtz, really, it's like they can approve it locally with variances, but that does, it cannot go forward until there is an approval by this body, and all the conditions are met.
And that's two of our questions. Do we have the flexibility to entertain some type of modification? Is that our role?
Yeah, I mean, that's why we place conditions on it, and we have performance bonds and all those things that go into it, yeah.
That's our role, though, right?
Right. It's not really to provide flexi, flexibility, but it's to hold, to uphold the subdivision regulations and work with the developer to figure out ways that we can, you know, do what's best for the township, do what's best for the environment, do what's best for everybody involved. And I know that that's why we try to have these conversations early in the process, so they're not coming with a final plan, and we're like, no way. So it's very step by step, and there's a lot of conditions that have got to be met. Public worksides, roadway guys, sanitary department, I mean, a lot of things have to be met before we can go on with the improvement plans. So it's kind of stay, I mean, it's not holding, but it's a bit of a holding pattern until we get through these conditions.
Okay.
To meet these, and so, but it's a great, I've had many conversations with the trustees, like we've got to find a better way to get these things done, because it's just, it's not fair to developers, because if they get it approved locally, they assume they're gonna keep going sailing, and it's, we've got these.
This keeps happening.
So should the trustees be, I mean, this body should be going through their approval with the trustees?
So we had, did we get comments back?
We're thinking of flipping the script. Ultimately, they would have to come to us, do that preliminary review first, right? And then ultimately, how it's set up now is, I will, once I receive those applications, I will send them out to all of our agencies and partners. They'll comment on it. We're thinking if we're the first ones to see those plans, including the township as another department, so to speak, right? Get their comment from a zoning perspective, see where it doesn't meet that, and then kind of go from there.
Actively involved in the township zoning approvals.
Right, yes. So something, something that I want to start doing is really attending, really attending those meetings ultimately, in person, just to see what's happening.
Is it rigid, or is it, is our role, or your role, if you receive this first? Is it say, here's the rules, we gotta follow 100%, or here's where I think it's, there's some flexibility, and we can achieve our saying mutually, though they want to develop, we want them to develop within certain parameters.
Yeah.
And as long as they can achieve that one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, the idea, the idea is that I want to make it as least subjective as possible when it comes to this. So with regards to what is set in our current subdivision regulations, those are the hard regulations, right? It's just that flexibility of the modification piece is where it gets kind of sticky. So I really think we'll fine-tuning that process in a way, ultimately with everything else that we're updating with it, relining, looking into conservation districts, right, from a zoning perspective for the township. All these other things are going to kind of culminate together. So ultimately, yeah, I want the regulations to be hard, hardened, hardened fast, honestly. No questions asked about it, right? That way, once it gets to the township, it's like, okay, we're all on board, we know what's happening, we understand your regulations as they relate to ours. That's kind of the ideal situation with it. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, I think it's, just looking, kind of.
Yes, right, right.
And like, I understand the mitigation of wetlands. If you're rigid, say, no, we're not gonna allow this, or there's flexibility. If you find a new site, relocate, do some.
Sure.
New parameters of what EPA is saying, so our conservation, all regular regulatory bodies, but if you don't have any influence or any flexibility, then.
And that's, and I think with this one, again, we were, we understand the commission's stance on wetlands and the mitigation that comes with that. And so with this, I think just the fact that they've done their due diligence and working with us, at least opening that conversation to create wetlands elsewhere on site, and really activating that as passive recreation. I really think that they, I mean, they've, they've been, they've been good partners with us on that. And I think that should, that should definitely factor, even though the hard regulations have not been met. That's just, again, my take on it, I'm just working with these guys, so.
Sure. Any other further comments, questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to conditional approval of the overall master plan for Phases 1 and 2 based on the conditions that have been listed in our, in our packet. Motion made and seconded. Any other further comments, questions?
Good afternoon, my name is Keith Mitchell, representing Belmont Place Development. Just regards to the wetlands, wetland permits, there are two wetlands on the site, one is jurisdictional, one's not. We did pay a mitigation fee for the isolated wetland with the Ohio EPA through Ohio Wetlands Foundation. The other one, we're not touching the other wetlands, so that's the only wetlands we have on the site. And as far as stormwater goes, the reason for the basin on the south side of the creek, that has to do exactly with the township's overall drainage plan. They came up with stormwater for areas that could retain more stormwater. That is there to retain stormwater. It doesn't do our site, our community, my homes, any good, because I can't get across the creek to put my water in it. But it will take overflow from the creek, should the creek overflow. In addition, we put additional stormwater around Shady and Sharp with enhanced landscaping, did some mounting and lower some areas to get additional stormwater. All our stormwater is contained in that central basin. Actually, we have more than we need in the central. So everything else we're doing is above and beyond. And that south basin is basically there because of the township, and I'm trying to work with them on their overall stormwater plan.
Thank you. Mayor Kurtz.
You're saying the surrounding properties will be better served with the drainwater program you're putting together on this site?
The region should be, because we're actually increasing the volume, storage volume that helps everybody. Thank you.
Weiss?
I just want to make sure I'm following the difference in the wetlands area for code versus what's being proposed? Is, what's the differential, or am I looking at this the wrong way?
As, as in the, what they've eliminated, or what they're replacing, is that?
Are you asking, is there a stormwater required, requirement in the subdivision regulations?
What's the difference between what we require and what they're doing, proposing to do? You know, you put in AI, and you gave both, they would tell you what the difference is. Right? That's just an example, right? Just asking what the example.
Sure, I do not know that off the top of my head, as far as what they require versus what we would. I can definitely do some digging on that, though. As far as stormwater, usually, I mean, usually those are, I mean, pretty standard requirements through Public Works. I don't know, maybe Director Dever knows, but, so.
I would just ask next time for a trustee to come here, because they're not here, and this is their township, and I think that they might have been able to answer the question there. So that would be helpful. I think when we have something like this with all these conditions and contradictions and conflicts. Please note it.
Mayor Weiss again. Staff has recommended.
With condition.
With conditions. Okay, on the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna be a nay.
Those opposed, we have one aye.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda is County Planning's bylaws, the proposed amendments.
Thank you. We are back again. Discussion number four. Hopefully, this is the last discussion. It's been great going through this, and Wesley Crutch from Law Department has been tremendously helpful with this. As we went through and really fine-toothed combed it after the last meeting, we wanted to make sure we actually got everything we wanted to get done in it, so that we don't have to come back and change things again, hopefully, for a long time. But it has been a very good exercise, I think. So a couple of you have like a bleeding document with all the red line comments, but this is truly a combined all.
but this is truly a combined all edits since we started this process document. And I did put together a memo to explain that, which I hope is more helpful because I think there was some confusion last time with different versions. So hopefully that's more helpful. But just since you saw it the last time, we talked about the change in meeting location that was in the bylaws. And since we changed the location at that that month, then I thought it was, we thought it was a good time to refine that. And based on feedback, I think Chairman Chair Dover and Vice Chair Simon talking about like the need to, it's just now it's been cleaned up to really, if we do it, we have to give seven days' notice in advance for public to be able to attend. So that's pretty much cleaned up. And we looked through version controls and found that in Article Six, somehow we deleted the removal of officers and vacancies of officers, which was not intended to be removed. So that was, that red line was rejected. So based on, you know, the the document you have in front of you, these are all the combined edits and changes since we started the process. And so as our bylaws state, we have to discuss it at a meeting and then it will be voted on at the next meeting. So that is where we are at at this point.
We're at the discussion.
We're at the discussion phase again. Wesley, I don't know if you had any comments?
I just have two additional comments and I apologize if if this is repetitive because I may have said this at previous meeting. But the red line edits are meant to do two things, in my opinion. One is to align them with the county code two six point one two and the Ohio Urice Code seven thirteen point two two. And the reason for that is because in the event there's a change to one or both pieces of legislation, then we don't have to come here and do the exercise of changing the bylaws. The second is really just frankly, changing some of the terminology, being specific to County Planning Board versus the Executive Director Mary Serby. So outlining those distinctions between the board's powers and then Director Serby's powers. But other than that, I I think, you know, we've discussed that we just want to basically simplify the bylaws, reflect what the law already requires and and have these be somewhat streamlined.
As you just made those points, I'm thinking too, we have appendices now with all the documents. Do we need those? This is where we'll have to date probably the appendices as of because all the references to all the different codes and charter ordinances are are hotlinked in the documents, you can go right out to it. So that would be the best way for the most up to date information. But I do think it's important to have all those pieces attached to this document because there are a lot that are referenced throughout the bylaws.
All right, any other comments, questions from the board? I appreciate all the work on this. So the next time we have a discussion on this, it'll be for action to pass it.
Correct. So it'll be cleaned up and everything will be page numbered correctly and ready to go.
All right. Outstanding stuff. All right, if nothing else, we'll move on to the next item. Next item is the fiscal update.
Get our steps in.
Good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Carafa. I'm County Planning's Business Services Manager. And I'm here today to give you a a brief update on County Planning finances. I know the last time I was here was December. So I put together a short agenda and I'll start with some highlights. Essentially, year two of, twenty twenty five is year two of our current biennial budget that was actually built and adopted in late twenty twenty three. Now, our budget is supported in full by the County General Fund and that funds both our County Planning Agency operating budget as well as like a special program budget for different programs that we administer. So combined, our combined budget was appropriated at just over three point one million dollars. And of that, nine hundred and fifty thousand was authorized by County Council in our budget for another round of funding in twenty twenty five for the Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Program. And really, the majority of the funding authorized our agency's operating costs. So that in total, our operating budget was closer to two point two million dollars. This budget is intended to fund twenty one full-time positions, which are all still occupied and that includes a year-round intern. I would say in general, we are on track with our spending and we continue to bring in outside revenues through contract dollars and fee for services with client communities. Okay, so our twenty twenty five operating budget was approved and adopted by County Council at just over two point two one million dollars. Included two adjustments to County Planning's overall personnel accounts. Okay? It initially included an additional appropriation for all occupied positions in twenty twenty four when the the biennial budget is revisited. And it also included a county executive appropriation to pick up some equity adjustments that were put in place for a handful of our planners and senior planners. They received an equity adjustment and it was countywide. So when combined, our personnel costs, which is both salaries and benefits, they are our largest expense. They account for roughly ninety eight percent of our total budget at one, two point one eight million dollars. Now, our original appropriation in twenty twenty five for, within our nonlabor accounts, however, did not receive any adjustments. This was funded identical to the twenty twenty four budget. We have less than a thousand dollars in our contracts account and roughly twelve thousand dollars in both of our employee services and our operations account. For basically a total nonlabor budget of just over forty thousand dollars to pick up all of these combined operational costs. Well, when you compare our actual expenses in twenty twenty four, you can see that our nonlabor costs have outpaced that forty thousand dollar appropriation within those nonlabor budget categories. Last year, we spent closer to fifty six thousand dollars in our total nonlabor accounts. Within those, we had significantly higher expenses within operations, which totaled twenty two thousand, and that's primarily the software costs, license fees, software costs for professional planning, design, software. But we also incurred exponentially more within contracts at roughly nine thousand dollars last year, even though, again, we were funded at less than a thousand dollars there. So knowing that we would exceed, again, our original budget in many of these nonlabor categories, County Planning did seek the creative solution of repurposing some of our revenue that we received earlier this year to help fund some of these projected shortfalls. So in April, County Planning requested and we were able to successfully repurpose about thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars that we received in outside revenue earlier this year to help fill those gaps. We used twenty twenty four as a guide and we repurposed revenues within those three main accounts that we were definitely going to have a shortfall. We added five thousand to contracts, twenty thousand to our employee services and about twelve thousand to operations. So this increased our total nonlabor accounts from that original forty thousand to now seventy seven thousand dollars for operations. Sixty eight hundred now in contracts and then the remaining seventy thousand five hundred in those operating and expenditures accounts. That brings our total aligned current operating budget closer to two point two five seven million dollars. So we put it all together, just wanted you to see each of these budgets side by side and again, year-to-date actuals. We have the original County Council budget shown in dark blue, our current aligned budget in green and those year-to-date actuals in gold. I pulled this data from last week, so it's pretty current, although every day we're constantly processing payroll or accounts payable things. So snapshot in time, I can tell you that salaries continue to be our largest expense and we were fifty percent spent through early June, right? Eight hundred and eight thousand, eighteen thousand dollars already in professional salaries. Then we have benefits costs, which are highly correlated but lower than salaries, are also halfway spent, but we are on a slightly higher trajectory with benefits because we've already incurred fifty five percent of those appropriations in early June. And that is at two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. Within our operating and other expenditures accounts, because we are anticipating those higher expenses here and having moved in that thirty seven thousand in revenues, year-to-date, it it looks like we've not spent much. We have spent eighteen thousand six hundred dollars here, but we have yet to process a whole slew of expenses. We're covering professional membership dues, which are ever on the uptick. We had authorized certain conference attendance and expenses this year so that folks could maintain AICP professional certifications and such. I mean, there are things under Mary's direction we've tried to defer, delay, but knowing we're able to repurpose some revenue, we're using it to help build staff, right? That's primarily how we prioritize some of those funds and put them in the right accounts. But we also have high software expenses. So last year alone, it was like fifteen thousand dollars. Then earlier this week, I'm told, oh, we're going to add another ten percent increase on this. So like, you can all appreciate costs are not going down, they're just going up. So. So within contracts, we've spent about thirty eight hundred dollars of that, which is, you know, halfway so far. But there are things that we are deferring. So we anticipated perhaps upgrading our countywide website. We will defer that for another year. And perhaps some other operational contracts that we're just going to have to put off because times are lean. But I will be reporting back to you later this year, so you'll get a snapshot, you know, of of where we are, but for right now, I think we're on track. So outside of our operating budget, County Planning has managed this program budget for the Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Program. This was a five-year commitment where we acted as the fiscal agent on behalf of the Department of Sustainability. And we have been administering nearly a million dollars in reimbursement grants annually since twenty nineteen. We had a one-year hiatus and that was because of COVID in twenty twenty. So as part of this two-year biennial budget, nine hundred and fifty thousand was again appropriated in County Planning's program budget for another round of tree canopy grants. However, Soil and Water, I think we've suggested they expressed an interest in taking over the program and kind of reinventing it. And because County Planning had basically fulfilled our five-year award obligation, we recently requested transfer out of this rounds of funding to Soil and Water's budget so that they can manage both this and future rounds of the HUTSIE program. So we'll still be involved, but we are no longer acting on new rounds of funding as the fiscal agent. And that is important because we do still have two active program rounds open, one of which PY four, it closes at the end of this month. So we'll still have some work to do. We have active contracts there. And then PY five closes at the end of twenty twenty five and there's nearly six hundred thousand dollars still yet to be dispersed under that round of funding. So we're still very active with that. I would say, when I looked into this, to date, we've issued over three point seven million dollars in total HUTSIE reimbursements. And we expect to issue because we have those two active years open and knowing our track record, we've traditionally dispersed at least ninety percent of each year's award. That I'm estimating that we'll have issued a grand total of more than four point four million dollars over the life of this program, which is great. I mean, they don't typically get a million. There's been a million in costs for the agencies that administer it. But that's ninety three percent of all dollars received for the program to be dispersed. Here's a look at County Planning's outside revenue collections over the last five years. So while it does include lower collections back in twenty twenty, again, due to COVID, I think this is a really telling chart because you, it demonstrates our significant contribution back to the County General Fund. So over the last five years from the revenues we've brought in, we've helped to fund at least over one point one million dollars to the General Fund. So by us repurposing revenues, I feel like that's fair for what for what we contribute, right? We don't do that very often. We're trying to find creative solutions. Year-to-date, we have only received so far forty seven thousand five eighty, which we did repurpose the thirty seven thousand. But I think, again, we're projecting to bring in closer to two hundred thousand dollars this year from recurring contracts and new client contracts that we do have. In terms of next steps, we are going to be starting the next biennial budget process earlier. We already have a meeting scheduled for July. We plan to work with OBM and their staff to build a fair budget, but we're aware that there's a projected deficit, not just in the County General Fund, but in the Health and Human Services Levy Fund. But the guidance we've received from the County Best Budget Office is that both salaries and benefits are going to be based on Payroll thirteen, which is the one we're currently in, and we are fully staffed. Salaries will be built with a two percent increase in both twenty six and twenty twenty seven, trying to accommodate for cost of living adjustment. But they are projecting healthcare costs to be slightly higher. So each of those budget years, they're looking at a a five percent increase to agency costs there. But overall, we are expecting it to be another lean biennial budget. And then here's just a quick look at the timeline for what we're looking at because I can't believe it's nearly the end of June. So this is going to come up very fast. Third quarter is going to mark the distribution of base budgets that were developed with some feedback from our agency, you know, but OBM builds a base budget. Then in early October, the county executive presents a recommended budget to council. Come November, we start budget hearings and County Council entertains from each department and agency what that recommended budget looks like compared to reality. And then in December, we're expecting after three readings, like before County Council will pass the next biennial budget. So lack of going on, but otherwise, in in good shape. And I would entertain any questions.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions from the board members?
All right.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is twenty twenty five TOD development trends.
We seem we have Luke. Luke Oles is our senior intern. There's another.
Liam's coming.
He's coming.
He's here.
Okay. So we have published this document and we thought it'd be a good thing to just showcase some of the work that's been done around transit development that we've been talking about for a while. And so Luke is going to present with Liam. Do you want to get started?
Uh, sure.
Just because I know we're going to be tight on time.
So the purpose of the Transit Oriented Development Trends document was to look at added building value of new development throughout Cuyahoga County between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty four along public transportation, frequent public transportation routes. And then just looking to see which neighborhoods and communities have seen the most added building value of TOD in the last six years. So as a reminder, this is the corridor map we use to, of transit routes. So there's twenty two total corridors that run through twenty six different communities. So new for the TOD development trends document, this year, we visually reviewed every single development that came up throughout our analysis. So we use this criteria to determine if it is classified as transit-oriented development or not. So in the past, everything that was within. So in the past, everything that was within the buffers that you just saw was TOD, no matter what kind of development it was. So this year, we use this, these guidelines, close to the street, multiple stories. Is the parking located to the side or the rear of the building? And then is the building, is it mixed use or is it a TOD friendly use? And is there a front-facing building entrance? So we use these criteria to see if there is, if it is actually contributing to a good transit oriented design. So for example, the building on the left here is a good example of TOD. It's multiple stories, close to the street. Parking is located in the back in this example. There's retail on the bottom with office space on top. And the building on the right has some of those features, but not all of them. So this building is multiple stories, but it's kind of set back from the street. There's parking in the front. So this would not, the one on the right would not qualify as TOD.
Hi, Liam Lovita. Sorry, came in late. Just giving a brief overview of the data that goes behind this. So comes from a dataset that is unofficially called Delta Track. This is from the fiscal office in the tracks. Several different methods of construction. So for this instance, we're using a Reason Code thirty, which is just anything that is new construction. Once that data was pulled in, we ultimately filtered it down to anything that was a million dollars or more in terms of new construction over that one-year period in time. In this instance, it won't necessarily include any developments that are tactics and/or abated. And overall, it just does not factor in changes to the land value. In terms of the mapping process, once all those million-dollar-plus investments were tracked down, we then compared them to a half-mile buffer for frequent rail service, which in this case would be considered all rail stations. Next would be a quarter-mile buffer for frequent bus service. Frequent, in this case, is thirty minutes or more or less. And then we also compare it to boundaries. So we use these statistical planning areas or SPAs, or more commonly known as just the Cleveland neighborhoods, as well as municipal boundaries. Once all this is classified, we use GIS to spatially track each of these points on the map and classify it by its building value, which is that new construction number. The buffer, whether it's within the half-mile rail buffer, quarter-mile bus buffer, and in some cases, it can be both. And then also classifying it by the neighborhood. In this case, the most important was either being in downtown Cleveland or outside downtown Cleveland, as well as municipality. And then the output of that map, of that data, looks like this. On this map, this shows kind of in a varying scale by both color and by size of dots of different one-million-dollar-plus investments between 2019 and 2024. Those somewhat shaded buffers, those are the corridors for both the rail and bus buffers. The green is anything located within a TOD buffer. And then the darker green, it meets TOD criteria that Luke and Patrick went through in terms of classifying the developments as TOD or not.
And then the pink is anything that's outside the.
Yeah.
I know, it's over here, so.
So as a result of going through all this data, we found six hundred eighty-six total developments of at least one million dollars in added billing value between 2019 and 2024. Seeing the mapping, we can see that two hundred and seventy-five of these were in the buffers. And then going through the criteria that I shared earlier, one hundred and sixty-one of them met the criteria. Of those that met the criteria, one hundred and sixty-one, just five of them were located outside of the city of Cleveland. And then overall, TOD investment accounted for just over one-third of all total added billing value that have in Cuyahoga County between 2019 and 2024. This map shows just added billing value of what qualified for TOD in Cuyahoga County. So as you can see during COVID, we had a, there are a low point, and ever since then, it's kind of been going back up. And then in 2024, last year, we saw the most added billing value for TOD at two hundred ninety-eight million. This chart shows kind of what we saw in the map. So we have developments that are outside of the TOD watershed in pink. In the green are developments that are in the walkshades but don't meet criteria. And then in the black box are what does meet the criteria. So as you can see, TOD development over the past six years has accounted for just about one-third each year of total added billing value. But also, you can see there's a significant amount of development happening around the county, whether that meets TOD criteria or not. So going through all these developments, we can see how much added billing value they've contributed over the lifespan of the project. So these numbers might expand over multiple years, but these projects all had significant development in 2024. So the largest was the Artisan University Circle at fifty-four point five million added billing value. Second was Sharon Williams Headquarters, followed by the Ascent, which is significant as it's the only suburban, or high for being a suburban development. Fairfax Market and then Station Seventy-Three in Detroit, Shorway. So as Liam talked about, we classify by community and by neighborhood. So and as I mentioned too, there was not a lot of suburban development. So as you can see here, Cleveland is the overwhelming majority of TOD development since 2019 at over one billion dollars, followed by Lakewood, Shaker Heights, and Cleveland Heights. And then the chart on the bottom, we kind of group them by entering, uttering. So you can tell that in the uttering, both uttering east and west, there has been no TOD development back through our data. As for neighborhood, downtown had the most, at just over four hundred million, followed by University Circle, Ohio City, Huff, and Fairfax. And again, for this one, we kind of group them by east-west side, University Circle, and then downtown. So downtown had the most, west side was just behind that, followed by the east side and University Circle. So thank you. This is one piece of all the TOD work we've kind of been doing. So we just held our TOD summit yesterday, connecting developers and TODs. So just one piece of ever-going, ever-ongoing thing we've been doing, changing zoning, stuff like that, so.
Luke's done a lot of crunching numbers. And Luke started as our intern for summer, then became a Cleveland Foundation Fellow, and now he's our senior intern and recently graduated from Cleveland State. So I appreciate all the work he's been doing.
Thanks, Luke.
And thank you, Liam. I know all the mapping in the world is happening with this mind, this mindset here, so. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you want to give any updates on what happened yesterday?
Yeah, sure. So it's a good segue. So yesterday, we held a TOD summit in partnership with GCR TA. We had over a hundred and twenty folks attend yesterday. We tried to do, it was invitation-only because we really wanted to get a good mix of communities, funders, and developers. And it was really well-attended. I want to, you know, big shout-out to Patrick Hewitt, who's been leading this TOD work and the team. Really great panelists and conversations. And we were able to announce, we've been working with Department of Development because when we did the developers' trend survey, the developer's survey, looking at TOD, I mean, this has been going on for a couple of years now, at least, over two years for sure. We heard back that, how can we help get more TOD? And we heard about, the county needs to help with financing and finding ways to close those gaps. And so we have been working very closely with sustainability, entities, development, Debbie, housing, Sarah Parks Jackson, everybody, to come up with a TOD loan program. And we were able to announce that yesterday, which is huge. And so it's still, it's still gap, gap financing. So everyone's, they've gotta have their capital stack already ready, and this will be an additional one. So it's just another tool in the toolbox of the loan portfolios that Department of Development offers. And so it's going to get extra points if you're meeting these TOD requirements. And so a lot of their loan programs have the job creation requirement. And so there is a job requirement or an affordable housing component. So we're trying to make those balance each other out because we know with a lot of these on TOD corridors, the goal is to make that dense, walkable neighborhood so it has more housing. So what they've been at, we just handed out the one-pager with them yesterday when we're finalizing all the details of the actual program itself. But they're looking to have some pre-applications. This summer, they'll open up that portal and then do some analysis with us. We're gonna be involved in that process to figure out where it meets. And then if we need to modify scoring criteria and other points that are given based on what we're seeing come in. So I think it's a huge, huge step forward. That's what we wanted to do, to get to that point. Because we can only do so much with the zoning and the planning and, you know, all of the other things that are happening. And so now getting to this point in development and others stepping in and really kind of helping advance this, I think is gonna be really, really important. And Mayor Wheeler in South Euclid, they just approved their TOD zoning overlay. And I know we've got others in the mix here and other things moving forward. So it's really exciting to get to this point after all this work. So thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Luke, Laura, everybody who's been involved. And yesterday was Alex along. Everything was really great yesterday.
Okay, good stuff. Thanks, Mary. All right, why don't we just roll away?
Yeah, I know, we're getting short on time, and we've gotta hold on to you for policy committee. So I will try and go quickly. There is one part of my report that's important that we want, I want to talk about. So the one piece I had in here was the work plan update. If you remember back earlier this year, I did share that with everybody, just to identify the work that we were planning on doing. And then some general updates, and I'll let Bianca leave because she's been here waiting for this. But I wanted to welcome our new summer intern, Bianca Camarano. And she comes to us from New York. She just graduated from Cornell with her undergrad degree. And so she's already jumping in with projects and getting all involved. And so she moved here, has never really been here, doesn't know anybody here. And so brave, brave Bianca. And she has found a place to live and has taken the hotline every day to work. So it's awesome. So welcome and so happy to have you join us. Okay, so the one piece that I wanted to put on here, if you remember back in October, the board authorized me to enter into contract with USDOT for the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. So we were, we applied last May, twenty twenty-four. We were told that we were awarded back in, I'll skip the work plan for now. Oopsie. Okay, sorry. We were awarded, we were told we were rewarded back in September. Then we got the contract from USDOT maybe December-ish. And then I signed the contract after getting it vetted with Law Department in January. And after that happened, we had new administration. And so things got significantly delayed in getting a returned executed contract back. We got a contract back earlier in May that has very much revised terms and conditions associated with it. And so I was not comfortable moving forward with the signature without bringing it back to you, at least for discussion. We have brought this back to the Law Department and just gotten some more information. Jim DeFeo is here, and I know Wesley's been part of this as well, just to try to better understand what the liability is for me as the executive director and our agency. Some of the executive orders, you know, really talk about complying with immigration and ICE and stopping illegal DEI programs and efforts. And so I just personally am concerned about, you know, we've got equitable community planning in our mission statement. Our application included equity components because the original contract included equity as performance measures. All of that has been taken out. And so I just really wanted, if, and please don't feel that you have to make a comment because I know this is a public meeting, but if you wanted to, you know, ask me any questions or make any comments on it, some of the things, you know, as I mentioned, those were the real big things, and they've removed all the equity pieces on it. And I think the other piece is, we've got, you know, the letter from the Secretary of Transportation echoing that, executive orders in those Safe Streets and Roads for All contracts that is now different. So I just think it was different enough that I wanted to at least bring it to you and let you know the status. So we have not yet signed it and really can't tell me what to do. It's just advising me on kind of pros, cons. And other communities are obviously in the same position that have unsigned contracts for federal funding. And so I guess the one point I would make, these terms and conditions don't only apply to the work that we're going to do as part of Safe Streets and Roads for All. It applies to all the work that we do as an agency, so.
Mary, have you signed and executed the document? When do you expect to start, basically, progress?
Right, so we're obviously delayed, very delayed at this point. We would have to put an RFP out. Once we get a signed contract, we have to put an RFP out to solicit a consultant to do the work, identify as consultant, and then start the process. So I would think probably, I mean, third quarter probably at this point. Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor Rice.
Just, the dollar, what's the dollar amount?
It is six hundred thousand dollars. And one of the, some of the feedback I got is if someone wanted to have a civil lawsuit against me or the agency, they can have damages up to three times the amount of the award, which would put us over a million damages, so.
Any comments from Jim? Do you wanna?
Can I ask Jim, as a follow-up? So the damages would not be exclusive to this contract? Any other across the board, the planning commission's work could open up to liability director or the board? Is that what I'm hearing?
So it's, it's a little more limited than that. The conditions do state that, the main one in issue has to do with DEI programs. And there's a condition that states that we're certifying that the planning commission does not operate a DEI program that promotes diversity that is unlawful, that is violates any anti-discrimination statute. And they state that that is a material term for the contract for purposes of the False Claims Act. False Claims Act allows treble damages if the government provides funds under a false statement. So the damages that would be available if it was found to be liable for a claim under the False Claims Act would be treble the amount of the funds that were actually dispersed to the planning commission, not the entire budget.
I do know we've, you know, determined that there are injunctions filed against a lot of these, you know, executive orders. We are not part of those. And the City of Columbus joined, the City of San Francisco, and a whole host of other entities. And it really looked at not just DOT, but HUD and FTA and others because it's all kind of the same contract language now in the new contracts.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments?
I would add one extra thing, and that is, it is a reimbursable grant. So we wouldn't be awarded the funds upfront. We would have to go through the effort of finding and securing a third-party vendor, get them under contract for them to incur costs for us to be reimbursed by the Fed. So we are at some liability of, in that interim, if we are found to be not following those federal parameters, and we've already dispersed funds, we may not get those funds back.
I think, you know, obviously, this is, was a, you know, countywide safety action plan. And so all the communities in Cuyahoga County were gonna be part of this. And it would be an effort for us to have a plan. So then it would allow municipalities to apply for implementation dollars, which I know those are coming again, and people are applying because it's, the old stuff is still stacked back. But, you know, if we don't, if we don't accept the funds for this and don't move forward, you know, the work can't be done. And we're gonna have to find alternative sources of funding to do that same work. So, you know, part of me is saying, well, we are so delayed and now have four new projects coming on, plus our other work. So it's like, is it timely to do this work? Obviously, we want to do the work, but given the delays, it's really kind of offsetting where we have capacity and not have capacity. So there is an opportunity to say, like, we just, we can't move forward given the delays without addressing some of the issues that we're concerned about. But in the end, I just have to make a decision, so.
We support, I support you, whatever you.
Thank you. I know we have one community that's waiting for us to decide because then they're gonna proceed the same way. So I know there's been communities and states or cities that have. or cities that have signed it, and then also said, I don't agree with any of these, so that's not going to go very far, probably, so. So if you want to, you know, reach out to me separately, I welcome that after this meeting. But I think we've gotten the information we need from law, and thank you, Jim, and thank you, Wesley, for, you know, kind of combing through all this. We're not the only agency, obviously, in the county that's going through this, and we are separate from the county, not a department, so we do have just that piece of it too. But with Cuyahoga County in our name, it's like one thing, so it's fun to bring an opportunity.
Mayor Weiss?
Thank you. Chair, another, just question. Did I hear that for the False Claims, is it broad enough to pick up not only the executive director, but also board members? Did I hear that?
Under the False Claims Act, there would, there could be an action against the Planning Commission, whoever is alleged to have made a false claim. The board would not be somebody that's making the false claim. It would be whoever signs off on the agreement.
Yeah, and I think just, just kind of point of a clarification too, since I have been authorized to sign the agreement, if I choose not to sign the agreement, I don't think that's something that has to come back to the board. It's just, it gave me the opportunity to sign it based on the information we knew. So I don't think it's a board item that needs to take place if I don't proceed. Is that correct?
I would agree. Okay, thanks.
Okay, yeah. Please reach out if you want to follow through separately. Thank you, Jim. So we'll skip this today. Just, we're moving right along. Everything's great. We provided a draft strategic imperatives and initiatives plan for the team, which is an internal document that, you know, complements this, and so we are moving forward. Feeling good about where we are at this point, but I will provide an update when we've got a little bit more time. And then we are going to likely, we will, I'm not going to say likely, we're going to need to have a July meeting. We've got a lot of the new projects coming forward, and we've got some additional township projects that may be in front of you. And so, sorry about that. It's after the holidays, so hopefully everyone can enjoy the holiday week. And then Jennifer already mentioned the June 10 Council fiscal agenda to move those dollars from our board, our budget to Soil and Water's budget. Solid, Soil and Water, correct. And then we've also been talking a lot about zoning and how we can have more of a positive effect. And rather than just going community by community by community and trying to look at opportunities for doing something more broadly. So we have been talking to some of the philanthropic entities to really figure out if there's some benefit to doing something like that that would benefit many communities at one time versus one at a time. It's just going to take us a long time, but having really good conversations. Data Book was published also. It is online. It is an amazing document. Kevin, Liam, Dan, everyone else that worked on it. You can have an electronic copy for free. It's on our website. You can also, if you need a copy, a hard copy, please let me know, and we can get one to you. It's a lot of pages, so we didn't print a ton. But if you need any data on your community, please, it's a great resource. It compares you with all the other communities, and really great information in here. So if you haven't taken a look at it, I'll follow up with a link to it when I send out these slides after the meeting, so.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any old references? Any none? Any, anything else for the good of the order? New business? Nope. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second by Mayor Kurtz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Don't go anywhere, because Solid Waste Policy Committee is next. I mean, you can go to the restroom.